Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
It's 5:30 and I'm going to call the meeting to order. We'll do the pledge quickly. Please would you hear this? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all. Adjustments to the agenda without objection. I'm going to reorder the items to put some first so that if we end up running out of time. So we adjusted 1 and 2, 3 is the adjustments which I'm doing, 4 will be review and approve the minutes, 4A will be the principals' reports, 5 will be new business, 6 old business, 7 executive session for personnel matter, and then 8 will be reports by the superintendent and the committees, and 9, I've got the order right, 8, make sure I'm not leaving any out, 9 executive director's comments, and 10 set the date and time of the meetings. We're a little limited in time tonight, so we're going to move right on to number 4, review and approve the board minutes for September 19th and October 3. Chris, do you see anything wrong with the minutes? Anything that needs adjusting?
I'll move for approval, but the only thing I saw, I'm not sure which one it was, it was a discussion. What did me as saying that Saxons River School grounds belong to the town of Saxons River, because it belongs to the town of Rockingham.
The town of Rockingham.
That is a substantive error.
Okay, that's on page 5 of the September 19th minutes, so it should be town of Rockingham under Chris. This is comment. Okay? Anything else?
I didn't have anything.
Okay. Bill, did you see anything in the minutes that needed correcting?
No, I didn't, Priscilla.
Okay, then we will accept the minutes as corrected this time. Number 5 is new business for discussion and action, and these are the policies. Policies were posted, D1, D1A, and D5 were posted on 9/28/22, F2 and F9, D35 and B35, which are the same policy, we wanted them in both places, were posted, um, no, I forgot that, posted 9/30/22. And the other two policies, C9 and C13, were posted on 10/14/22. Is there any comments on those? Anything that you want to discuss? Yes, Chris?
Well, I have a question.
Sure.
We are not a pre-K through 8 district, not a high school district, so it is unnecessary and inappropriate to have efficiency-based graduation requirements as a Rockingham policy. Now, maybe you've decided that you just want every district to have the same policies, but it's only the high school.
Basically, that's the reason, Chris, it's because they had asked for us to put them in as a general thing, and then we could add any additional ones that Rockingham wanted. And because it's D1 and D1A, which does refer to our retention and promotion, and that is part of the reason why that one's there together.
Well, I'm not.
Are you okay with that, or we can?
I think it's ridiculous, but I'm not going to complain. I do want to note to the principals that are here that wellness policy, I hope you've all reviewed it, that's the one that everybody hates because it says, "No sugary snacks from parents," which is in school policy, and the idea is to give kids good food, and that's a tough one to enforce, but worth doing, I think. Make kids get plenty of sugary food at home.
Right.
And the idea is that they don't live here and they get plenty of exercise.
Right, and that's why we went with D1 under nutrition guidelines to say that when feasible they should be sure that they are limited to those foods that improve and mitigate childhood obesity.
So I'll move to approve policies D1, D1A, D5, D35/B35, F2, C9, and C13.
Okay. Bill, do you have any comments on that?
Well, I had a little difficulty hearing what Chris said, but he mentioned something about parents. Could you just paraphrase what he said for parents?
Yes, yes, he was just asking that we, that the principals be aware that they need to limit sweet snacks at school and be sure that things hopefully that are being sent in are nutritional and that anything that's provided in a classroom is nutritional.
Okay, and by that I would understand. Are we saying no artificial sweeteners or genetically modified substances and the ingredients for the food or the beverages that the students have access to? Or are we just leaving it without that specification?
We didn't make it absolute on the limitations as far as, you know, if something happened to have that in it, we wanted to be careful, but we are limiting that to improve the diet and help the students.
And it refers to a list of appropriate snack foods that, and I forget who put the list out.
The federal government has a list.
Has a list.
So Bill, that's what it refers to, is the federal government's healthy snack list.
Okay.
Well, I would just, I'd feel better if somebody from the district took a look at the ingredients of what these healthy snacks are from the FDA, because sometimes they overlook certain things and we don't find out until there's been case studies or until we find out further down the line that there have been health ramifications because of some of the ingredients that have been put into these snacks, foods, or beverages. That's why I'm reluctant just to leave it to the FDA.
It's not just the FDA, Bill, this is our policy, and this makes the district and the principals and the schools responsible for being sure that the foods are there to improve the diet and health and to avoid obesity and model healthy choices.
Now, that's wonderful, just like the farm-to-table, the farm food chain that we have, we have it at Central. Do we have that at the middle school in Saxons River?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, it's pretty general.
Harley Sterling, who is the nutrition director, is very much on top of this, and believes in providing the healthiest meals possible and ensures that we have that farm-to-table at all of our schools.
Okay, that's great.
And he made.
That was my only comment, Priscilla, I don't want to roll this up any further.
That's okay. He reviewed our policy as well and made recommendations.
Very good, I'm glad to hear that.
Okay, so Chris, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay, so are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, so Bill, you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Chris?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so those are approved. Okay, the next thing on there is to appoint the open board position. We have one letter requesting and stating that they would like to be on the board. That's Caitlin Deshane Desmond, and Caitlin is on Zoom, so I would like to give her a chance to let us know what her qualifications are and why she'd like to be on here, anything that she would like to share and say. So go ahead, Caitlin.
Thanks to you all so much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. It's good to meet you. I am a resident of Saxons River. My husband and I moved here in 2020. I've been working in education for the past 10 years at TNTP, which is a nonprofit that works with states and districts to improve educational outcomes for kids. And so I've worked in a bunch of different states and cities, but I am really excited at the prospect of working in the one where we live and where my daughter, who is almost 2, will be going to school. So I, my background is primarily in data, project management, logistics, and operations. Most recently, I've been working with the Tennessee Department of Education and the Massachusetts Department of Education to run some early literacy trainings for teachers across the state and to help schools who are adopting and implementing new curricula. So that's kind of where my interests have been and where my experience has been for the past several years. But again, I'm just really excited to be more a part of our community and to contribute in any way I can to support the schools and our towns.
Does anyone have questions for Caitlin?
I had one question, Priscilla, this was the one that I believe it's a requirement. Caitlin, are you registered to vote in town?
Yes, yep, I am.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you for expressing your interest, thank you for pursuing this, and we certainly need another person, especially a parent, participating in helping us make decisions.
Chris, do you have any questions?
I do not, but I am very happy to have Caitlin on board, who's more qualified than all of us, it appears. It's great to have parent representation on the board, I mean, we really need that. So welcome.
Okay, so can I have a motion to appoint Caitlin to the board?
Sure, I will move to appoint Caitlin Deshane Desmond to fill the vacant board position through.
Town meeting, town.
Till town meeting, yes. Then, I don't remember which, how many years was left on this? This might have been.
This was it.
This was it. So it was going to expire anyway, but.
Right. So the motion was to appoint Caitlin Deshane Desmond to the open board position until the town meeting and the voting in March, at which time that if she wants to continue on a board, she would need to be on a ballot and let the voters make a choice. Okay? So how do you vote, Chris?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So welcome, Caitlin. You will need to go to the town office and get sworn in before you could do voting on the board, but you're welcome to participate in our discussions at this time.
But I think she's closed on Fridays now, so you don't wait until Friday.
Don't go Friday.
We'll be back tomorrow, so I will go tomorrow or Thursday.
Okay, sounds good, thank you, Caitlin.
Thank you.
And welcome. Okay, so the next thing is old business for discussion and action, if any. The student assessment results, they were sent to us for us to review so that we would be ready to address those and discuss those at our next meeting, our budget meeting on November 7th. But if there's any questions tonight, I wanted to open it up, so if there's a question from any of the board members.
We don't at this time.
You don't at this time, okay. Bill, do you have any questions at this time?
Not at this time either.
I will email Caitlin a copy of those as well.
Great, and did you hear that, Caitlin?
All of those on there again, just the flood of emails is kind of overwhelming inbox.
Feels good, doesn't it? You know, like old times for ya. I sat today just watching my emails, it's going. So yes, I will send it to everyone again.
Okay, so you'll be getting those, that's the MAPS testing that the schools have been doing.
No, this is the S-Back.
This is the S-Back, the previous S-Back.
So the one thing I will report, I was going to say before the superintendent report, but just so everyone is aware, S-Back, the state has decided to discontinue the contract with Smarter Balance. They informed us in early October and told us we had until October 22nd to grab all of our data. So they gave us very little time. We did a data dump, but we're now trying to sift through how we can sort through the data, because some of the things you got with the program was the ability to sort data certain ways, so now we have to maybe do it old-fashioned. So, but Deb Cardine put that together because she wanted to get it to you guys, and we'll be here at the next meeting.
Of course, the new company is the old measured progress.
Is it? Just with the new package name.
Got a new name.
Okay.
There are.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, and the second thing is as far as old business is the acceptance of a new retiree. So did you have?
I haven't given that, so I don't have it with me, but I mean, I do know that Jane Mitchell has, let me see if I can find her letter, Jane Mitchell has announced that she is retiring.
And she understands that she will not be offered a contract then in April when contracts come out?
Correct, we've taken that MOU and sent that off to folks, we just haven't gotten back, but we have an email from her prior to October 3rd.
Okay. Okay.
And so she will qualify for the payment under the plan of our agreement.
Okay, and she's the only one for this year?
For Rockingham, I believe, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, the next thing is to enter into exec session for personnel matter.
Are you going to let them go real quick? I apologize, I'm sorry.
I apologize, I had it on there to do that, and I skipped right over it. As long as Bill and Chris aren't, are in agreement, we'll let you go right now before we go into exec session. I apologize, I had my arrow there and didn't call on you. So what we're going to do is let the principals give their reports at this time, and then we'll enter into exec session. Okay, Carrie, go ahead.
Sure. So good evening, everyone. Their attendance, or the population at Sunville right now is at 156 students with pre-K. So we have 16 pre-K students, 31 kindergartners, 29 first graders, 19 second graders, 33 third graders, and 28 fourth graders. Now, there's a little crowd yet, we lost one this week and we gained two next week, so that was already accounted for those three, as we have one student that's going back to homeschool. And then we have two new ones that are just moving in right now, so. We're just hard at work, keeping the learning going. We have completed our ELA and MAPS assessments. We're reviewing the scores right now and making small group support plans based on the results of those, and we are completing our DIBELS assessments this week. Teachers have met with Deb Cardine and me to work on the Veneto awareness plans and for early literacy skills. We've ordered some more decodable books for our students and to help with small group instruction. Our nature-based teachers have been working with taking our students out, we've been using the trails by the rec center, they went to the pinnacle, and they have a lot more plans to get them out every month. So we're working with Antioch University to plan a whole comprehensive approach to keep those students out and moving and active and learning and things, so we appreciate everybody's support for that. We had some compliments from people when they were hiking that trail, and it was nice at the pinnacle. Last week, we had our 3rd and 4th graders out there. So as our farm-to-school report continues, each week the students have been working on planting and harvesting and studying more about various foods and recipes. Last week, we hosted a 2nd grade family pizza party, and we used the ingredients that we grew in our garden, so they made some pesto, they had that, and some kale and carrot salad that we offered today in the cafeteria. The students were able to make that pale and carrot salad, and then today we offered as a bite to everybody in the school. And we continue to work with Food Connects, we have our next meeting next week, I mean, excuse me, tomorrow, and planning on grant applications and just more support for the programming. So we thank Food Connects for their support and partnership. We also would like to thank the Janisons of Pete's Farm, they were able to donate 160 pumpkins and gourds to us for our students to decorate and have in class, so they've been taking them home soon and will be decorating those in class, so. Our first graders are partnering up with Deb Whitkis and the Greater Falls Community Center for Plant the Promise, bold planting, so they've been planting 200 tulips around the school and area and part of our gardens as a promise, and they're doing it in conjunction with the 1st grade project based learning. We are looking for family members to continue with our PTO, our Parent-Tutor Community Organization. We meet, usually it's a second Wednesday of the month at 6:00 PM on Zoom. Our next meeting will be on November 9th, so if anybody is interested, please join us, and we'll have a link on our Facebook page and also the school website, so we hope you can join us. We are planning on the holiday mall, so we're looking at right now December 15th as our save the date, it's a Thursday, so if you have any new or gently-used items to donate, please let us know, we are looking to do a collection in early December. We also will be looking for some shopping, wrapping paper, and some assistance with people to volunteer and to wrap the items too. So Thursday, December 15th, we're getting into the pre-holidays and discussing that. So let's see, and then we do have our Halloween parade, so it's a little bit amended this year, we do not have the bands from the schools and things, but we will be having the students dress up and then walk around the block, so just prior to dismissal, and maybe we'll be doing a small celebration in class beforehand, so try and keep it healthy as possible. Knowing there's an exception for every now and then, it's Halloween, but the rest of the time.
So we're feasible, right?
Yes, we're feasible. Halloween, a little bit of exception, so, but we're excited to get back into a little more quasi-normal experiences for the students there too, so that's pretty much about it for right now, and questions or comments?
Chris? Bill, any comment?
No, thank you, Carrie.
The only thing I would say is, Carrie, in the past, the Women's Club has supported the Christmas bazaar, be sure to reach out to them, because I know their education committee has done that in the past, and I'm sure they would love to help.
Sure, hello, everyone. So we are at 77 students, 15 in kindergarten, 14 in first, 17 in second, 15 in third, and 16 in fourth. All of our fall assessments are complete, and small groups for reading and math workshop as well as intervention groups are underway, and these groups are fluid. Weekly collaboration time with classroom teacher, interventionist, and our special educator is built into our schedule this year in addition to our weekly team meetings. Our ILT committee facilitated for the second time at our staff meeting today with the topic of conversation being arriving at a targeted learning focus, which is one thing all students need to know and be able to do, and something that we hold ourselves mutually accountable to doing, so that's the work of Focus Schools. At the end of the meeting, each staff member recorded their idea for a targeted learning focus for SRES, and our ILT will review these and use staff input to draft a targeted learning focus moving forward. Our week-long dance residency with the New Hampshire Dance Institute touched all of our core values, lifelong learning, respect, kindness, community, and relationships. As I shared in my newsletter, our week-long residency was truly amazing. Students learned in dance moves, they practiced growth mindset skills, they worked together as a class and a school, and most of all, we all had a ton of fun. Proud smiles and happy faces filled our residency, and best of all, we were able to share it with our families during an outdoor performance, weather held out. So big thank you to NHDI for coming to spend time with us. Classrooms have started to facilitate our all-school meetings. 4th grade went a few weeks ago, and our 3rd grade class will be facilitating this week. This is super exciting because it develops so many skills, including leadership, speaking and communicating, listening facilitation, responsibility, collaboration, and so much more. Some things upcoming, we too are having some Halloween fun, and our PTO is again sponsoring the Saxons River Halloween Parade, which they do annually, so that will be back. Friday, November 4th, I'll be hosting Coffee and Conversation again, and then November 9th is an early release, as you know, and the ILTs will be meeting with Focus Schools again, November 11th, if that turns out.
Are you doing the Christmas thing so that you would want?
A white elephant sale? Mm-hmm, yes. We have not determined a date yet. It'll be before Hanukkah, though.
You could get in touch with Wendy Hardy. She is the chair of that committee for the Women's Club.
I have reports from Jennifer Keenan real quick with pre-K, I'll still do that really fast. And so there's 35 preschool students in community programs, Rockingham only, that are receiving the universal pre-K tuition. That funding is $3,656 per child per year, so total, we've, there's been tuition of $138,928 as of today, and then within Rockingham or within WNESU, as the lights go out, we'll get the lights back on. But anyway, there's 25 preschool students that are in our early ed center, it's great to watch you guys dance. We have 16 that are at Central, nine at Westminster School. And then just as far as for the middle school, just with some numbers, in 5th grade, there's 57 students currently, 6th grade, 49 students, 7th grade, 67 students, and 8th grade, 69 students, a total of 242 students. This week is Spirit Week. Monday was Dress in Neon, it was great to see a kid in bananas running around, they were wearing a banana suit, a lot of bright neon colors, and today was dressed like your favorite teacher, and I know Mr. Bailey's on there, but Mr. Bailey, he had to be my award, was it, who was he dressed as? Do you remember? What if we lose him?
Who was that again?
The young student who came in with the dark bright, or dark-rimmed glasses and scarf, and I believe he was dressed like a 5th grade teacher, and I can't remember.
Yeah, yeah, Deb Davis.
Yeah, that was my vote probably for the best, it was great to see that. And tomorrow is Western Day, is that correct?
Yes, Western Day and also Picture Day, yes.
Okay. So.
Interesting combination.
It was, yeah, so. All right, that's all we got on.
Bill, any questions?
No questions for you, Andy, and thank you.
Sorry for that. Chris, you're all settled?
Was, you know, I would just ask, Laura, would you mind just talking about targeted learning focus?
Sure.
A little more in depth, I mean, what that really means, what you're doing and you want to do.
Yeah, and it's the SU as a whole, so we're all doing it together under, through the work of Focus Schools. And so essentially, each school will work with their ILT instructional leadership team to arrive at. leadership team to arrive at a targeted learning focus, and it's really was. Instead of going surface level with 100 different things, so we choose one focus area that we go deep with, and that is the core of everything we do. So it's the one thing that we want all kids, not that we don't want kids to do other things, but if we had to choose one thing, what would the one thing that we want all kids to know and be able to do?
So it'd be something like phonemic awareness, or is that an example?
Perhaps, but it stretches across, it stretches across all subjects.
Yeah.
Right. So each school will look at its data and work with its staff to arrive at what they feel should be the targeted learning focus for their school moving forward. And that might evolve over time.
It should evolve, yeah.
Right. But the goal is, is, you know, to be more focused with our approach to teaching and learning.
So like at Central, they might come out finding that like problem solving is, and you can apply that across any curriculum or how you're working to dive into that. But, you know, well, it's exciting that we're drilling down quite as we are. It's just getting involved, going.
And then is there a kid data, so you've chosen that problem solving, like present, there's a data level on the student level that you're monitoring how individual students are doing?
Yeah, it is all data-driven, so.
Thanks.
Anything else? Okay. Andy, yours was the only other report, so maybe just a quick, anything you wanted.
I totally forgot when I ran out. So I mean, I think that the S-Back was one of the real big ones. I can't remember. I had them from yesterday and, hang on, real quick. Sorry.
That's okay. Just thought that way people would hear.
Yeah. So tomorrow night, we'll be doing a presentation on the Early Child Learning Center because we've gotten back our feasibility study and our business plan, so we just wanted to present that. The, I think that was the, we've been working on the budget. We're hoping to bring a draft budget or proposal draft budget to the SU board tomorrow, something about, not a-
We are?
Not a draft budget, but a first blush at it.
Well, I'm hoping to have some up and down votes on some of the positions you've been talking about.
Sorry. Thank you.
That's what I'm hoping to do in the budget committee meeting tomorrow. I don't know if we're going to be ready to bring a draft forward, but certainly we'll fill the board and-
There you go. That is all I have on there.
Okay, thank you. I just thought. Yes, Bill?
Will tomorrow's presentation on the Early Childhood Center, will that be recorded?
Yes, it will be during the WNESU regular meeting tomorrow night.
But yes, those meetings are recorded.
And it's recorded, just like our meetings are recorded. So you-
Okay, because I'd like to have access to that and actually review it, even though I won't be there and I'll be on the road tomorrow at that time.
Yes, it will be recorded and you can review that. So you will have access to it. Okay?
Okay. All right, very good. I will probably do that early next week when I'm back.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions of the superintendent? Okay, then the next thing in order was the exec session for personnel matter. So if I could have a motion to go into executive session?
So I'm hoping to go into executive session to discuss personnel matter prior knowledge to either the person or the board could place us or them at a disadvantage. Now invite the superintendent and-
I think that's it.
Wouldn't it be appropriate to invite Caitlin?
Yes, and invite Caitlin, yes. Absolutely. Okay, so the motion is to enter into exec session to discuss a personnel matter where prior knowledge could place the individual and/or the board at a disadvantage and invite the superintendent and the appointed board member, Caitlin. All right, so we're coming back out of executive session with no action being taken by the board at this time. So the next thing on there is to allow for any communication in public comment, if there's anyone out there that has a communication or public comment. I put it at the end tonight, remember. I'm not seeing any, so the next thing would be director's comments. Bill, do you have a comment?
Only comment is to wish everybody a good night and a safe and fun Halloween celebration for all our students and children in Rockingham.
Thank you. Chris?
Just remind the adults it's voting, Election Day is coming up, and voting is the shiny penny you get for living in a democracy, so don't throw it away.
Sounds good. Caitlin, do you have a comment for us?
I just thank you so much. It's really wonderful to meet you all. I'm really excited to work with you, and I'm looking forward to seeing how else I can support.
Thank you, Caitlin. My only comment would be, I really appreciate my board members and all they're doing, and just remember that kindness to each person as we go through life goes a long ways. Our next meeting date will be November 7th, 2022 at 5:30. It's basically a budget meeting with any other items that we have to take up that night. Okay? And at that, if there's nothing else, and everybody's in agreement, we will adjourn at 6:40. Everybody set? Give me a thumbs up. Bill?
Yes.
Okay, see you on the 7th.
Good night, Bill.
Good night, Bill.
All right, good night, everyone.
Good night, Caitlin.